I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Amherst Board of Education. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, founded on the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now can we begin my presentation?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Yakobozie.
Here.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis.
There.
Mrs. Snyder.
On the way. I'd like to entertain a question with an opportunity to address presented, including any all agendas.
Some.
For a second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Yakobozie.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Who wants to go first? Who's most excited?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, board.
Hello, everybody.
Thank you for having us here. I'm more outstanding than everyone in the circle. I have a video we're gonna play. I was just telling Sarah that I was super excited because I know that school boards always want to see kids and they thought, how do we show kids on the year? And I was thinking, oh, I'm cheating again on the video recording kids to sing. And then, she even goes over there, like, pulls out the live children. So, stealing my thunder. So, very good. Good job meeting here. So, we're gonna show a little video. I wanted to talk just a couple of quick updates about things that are going on as we've started to reduce the safety measures that we've had to put in place for COVID and some of the exciting things at the primary elementary level. You know, I was substituting in a class today and there's something really special about carpet time and being able to bring kids up close onto our squares and have kids right up close getting instruction. And it was about two, three weeks ago, I guess, we called staff meeting and said, you know, we got approval from Dave Koval about it's okay to, for short durations of time, go ahead and bring the carpets in and kids can gather together for whole group instruction up close with the teacher. So, just small things like that that are, you know, we have field day coming. It's not gonna be exactly the field day that it will be next year, but it'll be a modified version of field day and we're just getting closer to normal. So, we're just really looking forward to normal. With that being said, we didn't do, we're not doing a big musical performance that we would love to have at Powers, but we do have an e-campus version or an electronic version of our performance that I have a little sampling that Doug and his team helped put together for us. So, if that's there, if you could play the full sampler. What's funny to me is that we've asked kids to dress up in their best clothing. They kind of love the fact that Spider-Man outfits and everything was dressed up for the day. That was dressing up, technically. So, you know, we really appreciate all of your support through this unique year and, you know, thinking about getting back to normal and seeing kids singing. There's nothing better than live children's performances, so I'm really looking forward to next year, but thank you again for all of your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Hello, everyone. So, I brought with me Molly Atchison and her students from our school. And I think several of our, at the central office, have been over to read her class this year, so they're very familiar. But Molly was new to us this year and she really has been doing some great things with her class all year long, and I really felt like they deserved the opportunity to share the things that they've been doing. Are you ready, somebody? Ladies and gentlemen, here is our pick of our year. All right. So, I mean, nothing would be possible without these little kids that made it happen. So, if you, we're just gonna kind of show you some fun things that we've been doing on screen. And we've obviously done more fun things than this, but that's what we're gonna talk about.
Honey, honey, one, maybe one.
Well, yeah, we can probably introduce ourselves. This is Rohan.
My name is John. My name is Sophie.
And this is... Well, they're writing right. They're going... I know. They're writing the right words. All right, Rohan, can you bring the titles for me?
Um, it's... It's...
Okay, so, Mrs. Mayorka, the school social worker, she comes in every Wednesday morning and she does yoga with us, so we thought we'd show you guys some of our favorite poses. You ready, dude? What's your favorite one? The star. This is the star. And Rohan and Sophie, you guys kind of were twinning with this one. What's your favorite one?
Mine.
Can you guys show them?
Turn them over.
Lots of breathing strategies. And John, what was your favorite one? Last thing to say.
It's my favorite.
Yeah. Nice stuff. All right. We paired up with some veterans at the Klekel V A and we did penthouse. So, we shared stories and we did infatuation and outpatient, so kind of got a little messy. So, we got to introduce ourselves to people and keep writing, and then sometimes we got some new people and we got our letters back. That was really fun for us. Okay. Another thing that we do every day, they go to science and social studies with Mrs. Stappin and Ms. Hubbard, and we're gonna share some of our favorite things about science and social studies. Sophie, what's your favorite part about social studies?
The vocabulary I want to say.
And why?
Because I like learning what they mean.
Yep. What's your favorite part about social studies?
Work.
Carol, huh?
I think me.
We put, we decided...
And today, Ms. Zappin and Cho Cho Daddy, I want to work to take double to get...
And John, what's your favorite part about going to the back place for social studies?
Being my friend.
Yes. So, it was like a picture with all of their friends. And what about science class? We go to Ms. Hubbard's room. Sophie, what's your favorite part about science?
The experiment.
Yes, she does experiments very often, super cool ones. And Jacob, what's your favorite part about science? Like, Sophie, you work on the computer. And Rohan, what's your favorite part?
I like to go take a... And...
And John?
And...
Why do you need the riding? Awesome. Okay, so we also...
I'm a gardener.
Thank you. We also started a gardening endeavor. I think we planted a little too soon with the snow coming down. Anyways, we planted a variety of sunflowers. John, you wanna tell them what kind of sunflowers we planted?
Pears, man.
Rohan?
Paul.
Good job. And what else did we plant? One vegetable, peppers. And if you go through, you kind of see four lines. So, this is some planting, the sunflowers. Go to the next one, it should look a little bit of growth. This one, they're starting to bud. The next one, they're getting a lot of...
Our plant to grow.
Yes. They're gonna grow. And then, we planted some outside and then some are inside as well. And they didn't look like they survived the snow, so we'll be able to take a look at that in a year. Okay, so this has kind of been like our biggest good news, their favorite part of the week. We've been cooking on Friday afternoons, yeah. We've been baking, I should say. We'll get a little adventurous into cooking sooner rather than later. We've cooked cookies, strawberry pizza, banana bread, many donuts, all these good things. Would you guys wanna share it with it, what your favorite one was so far? Start with John.
Bread.
What was your favorite? Chocolate cookies. What about Sophie? And?
Wine.
That's what we baked today.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, actually, do you wanna go pass those out? Tell them what you did today.
We made brown...
For who?
For the board.
For who? Wanna pass them off, Rohan?
Yeah.
Okay, and the next one. Okay. So, cooking is not life skills. We practice on a lot of fine motor skills. And John, would you like to read the kind of fine motor skill that we practice?
Spreading.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you so much, John.
And then, these are some fun pictures. Let's see. I think we're making groundhog pancakes, chocolate chip cookies, really birthday cake, sugar cookies. The next slide, we're also working on a lot of sensory...
Yeah.
Are we these ones? Ready? Touch. Smell, and... This is our... We're into the peanut butter, more things, side things, squishy things, sticky things, so we're doing all of that. So, in that, let's see, that was our strawberry pizza, peanut butter cookies, and that's the final product of our groundhog pancake. Okay. All right, and we're also working on social skills during these kitchen labs as well.
Let me tell you, awesome. You spelled my name wrong. Let me tell you, you need communication, you need sharing, follow directions, you need to have response ability, you need patience, you need independence, and most of all, teamwork.
Okay, and all the same time, we're also trying to make some life skills. So, Mr. Patel, would you like to talk about them? So, we're working on safety, yep.
We have light... Can, um, wash your hands, work in your oven glove, and knife hanging.
And we're also practicing reading during this.
Okay.
Recipes.
Like a pea, work in a...
So, fraction numbers, so when you're looking at like a tablespoon, you see one slash two, but we need to know how to read that out loud as well. Yep.
And...
Sequencing tasks. So, this comes first, then next. Last thing.
Time. More good...
Measurement.
More good ink.
And the last thing is science.
Changing.
Yep.
Move together.
Yep.
Changing, breaking hot.
The change in the oven.
Happening when you forgot changing.
Ingredients. So, we had a couple of cooking tasks. I think it's not just them learning, it's also me learning. And that's it. That's our good news.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the wild beats.
All right. Yeah, we're off to Special Olympics track practice, so... Special Olympics track practice.
Thank you, Amy.
Oh, yeah.
That was awesome. Hey, Brian, you take some good notes? I got it. Good job. And I'm set.
Oh, no.
Do we need just to mention item six, right?
Uh, yes, the public, here, this is an opportunity as required by law for any member of the public to comment and provide input in terms of our federal grant programs and how those dollars are allocated, and this is the opportunity to do so. I don't think anyone has signed up or has requested the ability to do that, so we can...
Can we move on to the Treasury's report?
I don't have a report this evening, Mr. Yakobozie. I'll jump into recommendations. Item 9A, approval of the board minutes from the March 2021 meeting. I believe we need to put the date in there. I'm sorry. Item 9B is the financial reports for the month of March of 2021. Item C is approval of the then now. Item D is something that you only see once a year at this time of year, and it is the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission of Lorraine County. This shows what our effective rates are and also what our expected collections are given the effective mileage. Item E is the receipt of donations that are specified there on the next page. Any questions?
What kind of desk was that?
It's really cool.
It must be.
Perhaps, perhaps the man manning the camera could explain what that desk looks like.
I guess it was a desk that was probably bought a long time ago, like when it was brand new. I was surprised that it was $26,000, but it's Fox Sports Ohio desk. It's really big. It's got three monitors in the desk that you can hook up. It's got three monitors in the front, so it does fit like on our stage, but it's a pretty nice desk. Needs a little work after the transport, but I think once we get it cleaned up and stuffed, it'll, it's a really nice, really nice addition.
It's got a lot of wisdom to go with it.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
All right, good. All right. Any questions who want to take motion for Treasury's recommendations, 9A through E? I'm moved. Is there a second?
Treasury.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Yakobozie.
Aye.
Mr. Sayers?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Yakobozie. Just three items here that I wanted to highlight real quick. Obviously, we're to the point in time of school year where things are happening very quickly and a lot of activities and so forth the last month of school, and that's going very, very well, and at the same time, planning and preparing for the upcoming school year, but things are moving forward in a very, very positive direction. I did want to, just a quick reminder that our state of the schools is next Wednesday, which is May the 5th, and that will actually take place at 7:00 PM in the Powers Cafeteria. If your schedule allows, we'd love to have you. And then, that will also be livestreamed by our Comments Live program, which is obviously a new program that we've kind of got off the ground this year. So, again, State of Schools, we're working on that presentation, and then, of course, after the fact, it'll be posted on our website, Facebook, and those types of things, so...
You said 7:00?
Yes, the 5th. I think it's next one, is next one, is it right? Okay, next one is the 5th, and 7:00.
Okay, thank you.
And then, a couple of other items. We just went through our most recent round of policy updates, and we went through that process last week with Neola. So, we will be within the next week or so sending those policy recommendations to Mrs. Snyder, Mr. Yakobozie as our policy committee for your review, and pending your recommendation, we can place those on the main board agenda. And again, this is something that just keeps us up to date with our policies and procedures. And then, the last thing I wanted to mention, speaking of planning and looking ahead to next year, again, just wanted to highlight our transportation department, Tia Ford and Mike, our head mechanic, and their team there have just done a wonderful job. And as of, I think it was last Thursday, we already have 28 buses that have passed inspection for next school year, 21-22 school year, and we have 12 buses to go. We have another round of inspections later in May, and then the final one in June. And the plan is, and the goal is, to have all 40 buses pass inspection by June for the entire 21-22 school year, which would be a really, really good thing. So, again, Tia and Mike and the team over there just have done a great job. So, that means we're looking at probably 28, maybe 29 routes next year. So, that puts us in a good position with 10 or 11 spares as well. So, again, that's a good, good thing, and wanted to highlight their work, and that concludes my report.
Are the two buses sitting up the old board offices the ones that were getting rid of?
Yes, those are actually two, I believe, that are on our auction, our online auction. And I think Chuck mentioned either today or tomorrow, I think, is the last day for bidding, but he did say we, I think we had four buses that were on the auction site.
Are you gonna buy all four at the same time? That's a big, great idea for you.
I don't need a bus, trust me. But seriously, we're gonna have money.
We did have some, we did have some interest, and so, yeah, those are buses that will not be a part of the league.
Thank you, Mr. Sayers. Mr. Mulder is not here, so we'll move on to Mrs. Hubbard.
Move on to me. As Mr. Sayers had mentioned, you know, we're doing a lot of planning for next year already, and one of the things that we really hope to get back to next year is our parent information nights. And so, later this week, we'll be pushing out a survey to the families and to the community requesting input for topics to cover. We've got a list that we generated, but also an opportunity for parents to fill in things that are their own, that are important to them, that they'd like to learn more about. So, keep an eye out for that, and if you can share it so that we can get as much input as possible, appreciate it. Thank you.
Did you want to mention anything at all to Mike? Any, for Mike first?
No, I checked with him. He didn't have anything in particular.
Rex?
Uh, yeah. The Board of Education at the vocational school met for the first time in person at a board meeting on April 17th since last year. So, they have, we have not been together, they have not been together in person at all. We still have been doing everything in Zoom, just because there's so many of us. But since there would be no public involved in the board's retreat, we didn't meet on the 17th, a couple of Saturdays ago, and had the first talk of what plans we need to do, what power we need to address some of the issues that are facing us, with the big issue still being some of the facilities that we know we have not had success in passing the levy there the last two times, but certain things continue to disintegrate and deteriorate as we go through that. So, that was a lot of emphasis of what was talked about at that board retreat. Just so you are aware, some of the other things that have happened in April, we had 900 completed high school applications the beginning of the month. We know that'll probably hit over 1,200 before we're all done here. There was the two recruitments, again, for the eighth grade applications to go into the ninth grade program. There were about 30 people that attended that, because we have seen more and more folks interested in getting their child to the school for four years instead of just the two years, especially those that may have some challenges or likes to be hands-on more than book-on. The competitions are in full swing. I think many of you have seen the ones where Amherst students have won, or have been placed and moving on to nationals from that perspective. I try to send those out to all of you because I see them on the press releases as they come. So, if you have any questions about that, you can certainly do that. We're also launching a new summer internship program this year for people that are in tenth grade, not those that are in the 11th grade, I mean, 11th grade, but in the 10th grade as well, okay? We're looking at coming up with a new mechanism, which is probably gonna be some kind of digital magazine that will be coming out and continue to focus and feature more staff people, alumni, and community emphasis, and that's in anticipation of the 50th year anniversary, which is fast approaching. I know that you're aware that the plant sale's happening, because I informed all of you that, it's gonna be virtual, so you need to buy some plants. Theresa, you always wanna buy things from the JBS.
Thank you.
So, you can get them and pick them up.
Did you eat them?
No, not the...
There was been no, you cannot buy any food this year during this school year, huh? All right. The senior celebration is well underway, as you know. Our red, probably you're seeing in the news media, that it will be held at Black River Landing this year, so it will be outside versus the Powell Theater. There will be the Words of Wisdom videos, which were our favorite last year. There'll be also some billboards and ad campaigns, all of those things to recognize the outstanding seniors that are recognized for each discipline that's there. So, again, we will also have the yard signs we typically do for the seniors graduating or completing their courses, studies at the JBS. And of course, the program at Black River will be recorded, so it will be streamed after that. So, anyone who cannot attend will have the opportunity to do that. Is there any questions or comments on the update for the JBS? Thank you. If not, I think it's my report.
Thank you. Any other reports, Steve?
No, that's it.
Okay, no recommendations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Yakobozie. This is, as the board is aware, this is a month where you see... Yes, thank you, Mr. Yacubozzi. This is, as the board is aware, this is a month where you see a lot of personnel items here. A very standard for this time of year, you see some presentations, you see some appointments of new staff, contract renewals, supplemental contracts, various leaves, of absences, just a multitude of different personnel items as we prepare for next year. And I know you've had an opportunity to look over these items and review these. With that, I would like to recommend approval of items twelve A through twelve S. Is there a motion?
So.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Snyder?
Hi.
Mr. Engel?
Hi.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Mr. Zappa?
Hi.
Mr. Yacubozzi?
Hi.
Educational recommendations?
Yes, we have just five items here. We have a couple of, uh, of these items are contracts for services for students with special needs. The first item, actually, there is a resolution recommended by Neola to give us the ability to modify graduation requirements as needed, very similar to what we did last year. And then I did want to highlight, uh, item E, uh, we are recommending approval of agreements that afford photography, uh, photography contracts, R I P J O, to, to handle really the student, standard student pictures during the school day, but we are recommending a change to go with Studio Q for our athletic pictures. Uh, as the board is aware, we've had some struggles, uh, in the past, and, uh, so we are making a change here and recommending, uh, Studio Q, uh, to handle those for us for the upcoming year. Uh, so I wanted the board to be aware of that. And with that, would like to recommend approval of items thirteen A through thirteen F. Is there a motion?
Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Teresa, discussion?
I, I just want to say, I think it's great that we're using local businesses, it's nice. It's Studio Q Photography, in case you want to add photography, the whole name is Studio Q Photography.
Yes, we should add that, yes.
Studio Q Photography.
Yeah, I just think it's nice that we're supporting a local business.
And I, I know he's excited about the opportunity.
Ed, what, what, um, what other studios were the school pictures we can look at? Because I know that's always a bone of contention to somebody, is why we use the same people to be... What was the thought process behind that, Mike? Because he had sent an email out, telling his students where you'd be, but it didn't mean enough information until I was at a question.
Yes, Mike, uh, can answer that question much better than I can, but, uh, what we had, I think this year, as I recall, we had, uh, R I P J O is not a change from what we're doing this year.
But I knew last year we had a discussion about that.
Yes.
And that it was too late to make that change, so I wanted to know how we came back to settle to keep them.
The R I P J O was, uh, very much a consensus among all principals, very pleased with R I P J O and the services they provide. Uh, the concern, the biggest concern was the Life Touch Athletic Pictures. And so that's where, I know, went through the process last year, and actually, Studio Q Photography was received very strong consideration a year ago, uh, for this contract, so that's why the decision was made to just, to go with them. And again, both of these are on a one-year contract basis. Sarah, would you be aware of any other information?
There were actually four, um, I believe there were four vendors that we entered in presentations from last spring prior to, um, the COVID closure. And just rather than try, other than the Life Touch for the athletics and those concerns, it was kind of the consensus to let's, let's try it out, Studio Q for the athletics and things, but R I P J O is a known hobby for us. And so with all of this going on, that's why we did the one-year contract. Rather than extend it to a multi-year contract, we're going to give them one more year and then revisit next year, because there were some other good opportunities, I think, with some other vendors, but we just wanted time. That's awesome.
Great. Anything else? I'll save it for... Because I know that you... Roll call?
Yeah, I was going to say, he might be on the road by now.
I mean... I'm good. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Zappa?
Hi.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Mr. Engel?
Hi.
Mrs. Snyder?
Hi.
Mr. Yacubozzi?
Okay, business recommendations.
Thank you, just two items here. The first one is a, uh, resolution that gives us the ability to work with first student, uh, in the event that we don't have enough drivers, uh, we have, if we have one of those nights where we have junior high track is away, high school track is away, baseball's away, softball's away, all happening on the same night. If we run into kind of an unusual situation, depending on the time that the buses have to leave, uh, this gives us the ability to work with first student. I think we've had to do that a couple of times, uh, so far during much of April. Most of the time, we're able to cover those, but again, spring and weather and those kind of types of things, uh, it's nice to have the latitude. And I know, uh, in checking with Tia, she had indicated that several schools were doing a very similar thing just because of, uh, you know, just the difficulty with finding substitute drivers, that, that kind of thing. And one of the things which is unique with us is we have such a large track team. Uh, so when our track team goes somewhere, I mean, we're not just talking, you know, one bus. I mean, we have, I think, over a hundred students in our high school track program. And of course, if our junior high is playing or running that same night, uh, we have those students as well. So this just gives us some, uh, flexibility with transportation. And then, uh, along the athletics lines, this last item is just a site agreement that you've seen before on agendas for those postseason tournaments, track meets, those kinds of things. This is something that the Ohio High School Athletic Association requires us to do, is to adopt a, an agreement with them. And those are the only two items we have, business recommendations. Would like to recommend approval of items fourteen A and fourteen B.
Is there a second? Now, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Mrs. Snyder? Mr. Engel?
Hi.
Mr. Zappa?
Hi.
Mr. Yacubozzi?
Hi.
Anything else, Steve?
That's it.
For all your journal, which I wanted to thank, but they all blew out of here. Our administrators for being here, Lori, thank you. Okay, you can pass on them, they missed it, so.
I will. She got all the attention that way.
It's always good when they're here. I definitely appreciate them coming, so. If we have nothing else, all in, be in a motion, is there a...
So.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Engel?
Hi.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Mrs. Snyder?
Hi.
Mr. Zappa?
Hi.
Mr. Yacubozzi?
Thank you all.